After hours, before hours, after hours. It's going to have to be picked up by an officer on duty that sees it there. They, other things need to be picked up. I just drove down the street and saw a couple of trailers that were parked the opposite way, on the opposite side of the street. That's wrong. That is a traffic violation. That's not an issue for me from the construction office. That should be a policing issue. So, there are things that have to be picked up by the police officers to be able to enforce what we have on the books right now. If we have Ray come on, and he's come on as a code enforcement officer, aside from what I've already been doing in this town for the last thirteen years that I've been here. I've been doing a pretty good job handling this politically with the contractors, the owners of the properties, anybody that's involved in these construction sites. I think we've been doing a pretty good job. It's just snowballed enough to where it's gotten so busy, and enforcement on our part has been tough to try to maintain and keep up with. If we don't get the police station to enforce what they have to as far as the traffic violations are concerned, and the trailer ordinance itself. We don't, I've never issued a summons to anybody for any code enforcement in this town, because it's always been handled on a case-by-case basis. If they call, somebody else calls, we have homeowners and contractors, random people down the street twenty blocks away that want to call about an issue, we take care of it on a case-by-case, and it usually gets handled. If we need more enforcement, and we have right here as a code enforcement officer that's going to have a summons book to be able to do this, that's going to help. But we need the police station to be able to be on board, to issue the summonses. That's going to put the fire under them to handle this.
Can't you, when you give a permit, I'm sorry. There's vehicles that have been parked and on the avenues. Our ordinance clearly says, any trailer must be fifty feet from the intersection on an avenue. It's clearly in our ordinance. Why don't we tell these contractors and give them a copy of the ordinance when they get their permits to put their construction trailers there? These have sat there for months and have never been moved.
When I get the calls, I don't drive around, I can't drive around town all day, every day, because I have five or ten other things to do in this town as far as doing plan review on permits, doing inspections everywhere. I, I mean, I have to stay in the office fifty percent of the time to be able to do plan review on these houses, especially now because of how busy it is. So, time-wise, to be able to go look at this stuff, it's, I'm a little constricted here.
But go back to what I asked. Why can't we give them a copy of our ordinances and say, "We're enforcing these, it would pay you to pay attention," and do it?
Oh, they can.
Because we can, yeah.
We can put it in every permit.
Michael, what did you mean?
And it's still up to them to be able to, you know, actually take it out, read it, and comprehend it, and actually force it themselves.
But at least we're bringing it to their attention.
Yeah.
That's on them.
Oh, I get their attention all right. They're, you know, it's not, you know, I handle things my way, which might be different from somebody else that's just going to get on the phone and start yelling at everybody. No, that's not the way I handle it.
All right, Michael, what did you mean by handling it politically? I don't know what you mean by that.
Just, not, I don't go to contractors, I don't call them on the phone and immediately start yelling them about what their job site looks like.
No, that's good.
Yeah, yeah.
You mean diplomatically?
Diplomatically, yes.
Thank you.
Yeah.
I was a little concerned there. Well, that meant.
And you're, like, the police chief is here. I really think that what happened, if we're having a problem with enforcement, then again, it all just comes to the same thing, and getting together, figuring out where we really need to address things now. Nobody's saying we don't come back to all of these. Nobody's saying we don't. All I'm saying is, I think we need to get it in a, in a different order of business. We meet with the contractors. Mike meets with the police. We start to see what can the police effectively enforce after hours, what is not being enforced, what starts to clean up. I think the enforcement aspect is way more important than changing some ordinances. I think what has to happen more is, meet with the contractors, meet with the police, and get the enforcement together. Then look at our construction code as a whole, and when we make changes, make them once, rather than piecemeal. That's what, that's.
I've started it within the last couple of weeks with these guys, and they're all, they're all getting on board. They're starting to understand what needs to happen with the trailers and the dumpsters even more. But I, I think we've, the town doesn't, it doesn't look that bad. I'm, I've seen it evolve from, in the short amount of time that I've been here compared to most of your people, that it's, it's gotten, it's definitely gotten better as far as enforcing the dumpster law, what's on the books right now that we have. And it took a while to get them to do this without hammering them with summonses and having them go to court.
Well, that's, but that's the point. We don't, we don't want to have to take a while to get this done.
Right.
You know, if, if, like you say, you take care of things diplomatically, and that's great, but evidently, everything's not being taken care of, we wouldn't be getting all these complaints.
Right.
My question is to Karen, how many complaints? You say you have all these complaints. Why did they go to you? Why, why didn't they go to Jill or the zoning officer?
They were sent to everybody.
No, I never got a complaint, no.
I wasn't the only one on it.
I got one, maybe one.
Joan, just, I get a lot of verbal complaints, and I take them to Jill.
Or tell that person to see Jill. They...
Absolutely. That's what I was trying to say that we're supposed to do, is go to Jill.
And then it can be followed up. And in all due respect to Mike, he has done a good job in the last six, well, I didn't have any contact with it before, but I lived with this, not as a part-time resident, not as a summer resident, but as a full-time resident, I've lived with this for eleven months.
I don't think.
So, it's something that I, let me finish. No, you haven't.
You have.
This is right across the street from me.
Right next door.
But, let me, please let me finish. And so therefore, it's something I think, when it's happening in your neighborhood, it's somebody's dream that they're going to build this beautiful home. It's something you just kind of take under your wing and you live with. If there is a violation or something that displeases you, you either personally go over, which I did, and every single time, they were very cooperative. So, or if it didn't get over that, then it went to Jill and it went to Mike. Or if it had to go further, it went to the police, whatever it went to.
And I think to what Mike is saying, you're saying the last couple of years, this has exploded and so on and so forth, and I, my opinion is, start with the meeting with the contractors, start with talking with the police department, see what can be enforced, or the nature of how that could be handled. Complaints, I can remember there was a time, if you saw an uncovered dumpster at midnight, there was a list that was given to the construction office, and everything was documented. It was found at 11095th Street, and then whoever was warned about it the next day, that was documented. If it happened again, a summons was issued. I mean, there's ways of documenting and enforcing it. And we do have the police, you, you're not driving around twenty-four-seven. They are. They're going to see at ten o'clock at night if somebody's got a full dumpster with things blowing down the street. So, there is some things we can do enforcement-wise, immediately we can start with. As we look at everything else, meet with contractors, there just could be some challenges we are unaware of. That's all I'm saying. There could be challenges we are unaware of. So, if we meet with the contractors, we start with the enforcement, we may end up right here, where we are today. But I just think it's a more prudent way to do it.
Well, I think we can do both at the same time. I think we're a little late in catching up on enforcement, and I think this is a great idea to move forward now.
I can tell you this. Anytime any calls come in from any kind of code enforcement issue, it, we've been out, I've been out on the road within an hour to go check it out and try to do something about it. It's not that, it's not that nobody's been paying attention to it. To get the guys to comply with this immediately sometimes takes a little bit, takes the end of the day, might take till the next morning, the next day. It, it hasn't been that we've been ignoring any of the issues that come into the office, by far.
But Michael.
I could bring Suzanne up from my office. She's the one that takes the phone calls, and she's the one to dock it, she's the one that writes it down. She's the one that tells me to go out and look at it.
If all these people have been doing work in this town for a long time, and some of them have and some of them haven't, what is wrong with the idea that Karen suggested that they are given all of the ordinances that they need to have in their hand to understand how a construction site is supposed to be maintained?
No problem with that at all.
Well, that's not being done though, right?
No, we've never, we've never done it, because we've never really had to do it. They have every opportunity to look online and look at our ordinances themselves.
But if we hand it to them and say, "This is our goals. These are ordinances that we're going to enforce."
Yeah.
I mean, to me, that's a no-brainer.
That can happen easily. That's, that's no big deal. And we actually started doing it last week, so.
Trying, Jill.
Last week. Jill.
This is, the subject has been discussed in A&amp;F. We did say that we would develop a list of all of the important aspects of all the ordinances, and these things will be given out to the contractors. We've already agreed that that's going to happen. I've already started the process, Judy already mentioned it. I gave a memo to code enforcement, construction, and the police. I've highlighted all the hot-button items, and asked them to start doing increased enforcement, which I can say they have started to do that. The police I contacted today, they were right on, on one. It, it is going to be, you're going to be a little patient with it. They've been more reactive than proactive with it. They get the message clearly. We want to be more proactive with it, and I do have faith that they will do that.
Now, everyone here, there's nothing wrong with what anybody said. I think everybody's had valid points. If, if you step up the enforcement by handing out the ordinances, and you have a meeting with them and discuss these issues, these are proposals, and discuss the number of complaints that have come across the table, they, like Charles said, they love working in this town. They certainly don't want to lose the business. They can meet the current requirements, they'll gladly meet them, and you know, you, we can, you put it, not, not as a threat, but we don't necessarily want to go here, and we need your help making the homeowners happy. We will go here if we continue to get these threats. The only, the only option left to us is then to make the rules a little more stringent. So, it's, it's to your benefit, to your benefit, to comply across the board. You know, I think we go through those steps before we just say, you know, "This is what we're going to do." You know, it's, it's like proposed rulemaking. The government does that all the time. It's published, you've got sixty days to make your comments. We should give, give them a chance to be heard. It's only fair.
I agree.
From a construction point of view, I don't think anything that's on that list is, should be a problem with anybody. I think we just need to get them in here to talk to them, and, and let them speak themselves. I think that's probably the smartest thing to do. So, they can get on board with it and understand it in a conversation like this.
Right, and then we'll get, we'll get more cooperation out of the gates if, if it is a discussion.
Guaranteed.
And I think within the, in the end, we'll all be better for it.
So, everybody here on council supports us moving forward on these?
Not, that's not what was said. What was said was every, is, is support, meeting with the contractors.
With these. So, if we don't support them, why are we taking them to the contractors?
All the ordinances.
All the ordinances.
I'm not talking about all the ordinances. I'm talking about these four items right here. The ordinances aren't going to be changed unless there's a good reason to change an ordinance.
Yeah, we don't need to ask contractors that they'll abide by the current ordinance.
I'm talking about what we have in front of us, which, as we've all said, it's not a big deal, so why are we procrastinating?
There's no point to meeting with the contractors if we as a body are not going to support this.
Right.
If we say reflectively right here, "Yes, we can support this," then we should meet with the contractors. But I'm not going to meet with a contractor and say, "Well, I think maybe..."
I think the point is this. I think what we're trying to figure out here is whether, if we more stringently enforce what is on the books, do all of the complaints go away?
It's not going to change, number one.
Rather than creating a new ordinance to say, "We're creating a new ordinance, but, by the way, the complaints that are on the books right now all have to do with the stuff that's on the books, violations."
No. That's different.
That's not true.
No, it's not. This is new.
People don't want to see houses being knocked down and hear all that dust and that...
But I think the few examples that were just mentioned here, we do...
During their season, if they're paying ten and fifteen thousand a week to vacation here, even if it's two days, it's two days out of seven they've paid for that are a mess, and they don't want to deal with it, and I don't blame them.
I think some of it just needs to be honed. I think Memorial Day becomes a little bit early in June. I mean, there's just some things I'm not, I personally...
That's okay.
I just think there's things, I think, I think to just say, "Well, I'm not going to meet with the contractors unless everybody's on board with all of these at this moment," I think it's just a little, I, I, I don't understand that logic.
May I just reword that? Because I think what Karen's saying, and forgive, forgive me if I, if I put words in your mouth. I think she's saying...
She doesn't want to go before the contractors and say, "We've gotten a lot of complaints. This is what we think might be a first step toward addressing those complaints, and council would like your input, and we would like to hear what you have to say about these first four ordinance changes." And then after there is give and take, after we find out that this possibly works, bring it back to council for council to say, "No, we don't want that." She doesn't want to do that.
Right.
She doesn't want to go to council, or she doesn't want to go to these people saying, "Council wants to know, because this is what we're thinking, because maybe this isn't what we're thinking."
I think it's more like, we want to agree with you. No, I don't think that's how a discussion goes.
Contractors don't make our rules.
Is, is this discussion with the contractors just with A&amp;F? Isn't it pertaining to all of us? Well, then we just need a consensus of opinion to move forward. This is already...
Why, but my question is, what are you going to say to these contractors if we haven't as a body agreed that yet?
We don't all agree with everything that's on here at the present time. Yes, there is a point to meeting with the contractors.
You say, I think what Ray just articulated, I think he articulated it very well.
Perfectly.
Is what you're saying.
What did I say?
Read it back.
What I said, what I said was, I think, I hope I can repeat it closely, that we've had lots of complaints, and, and we want to move, this is what we're thinking of moving forward with. We need to have your input and hear what you have to say. If, if we're going to tighten up and abide by all the regulations, maybe some of these complaints will go away, we could, and we can live with that. But if not, we're going to go in this direction. You know, so let us have your input. What do you think of this? I already said, I don't think there's anything on here that's earth-shattering. I think they can all live with this.
I would make one change. I would make one change to number three. I would say, from Memorial Day weekend, and then from July first through the Friday after Labor Day. We just keep it clean from Memorial Day weekend, not take it from the whole period. Memorial Day and ending after Labor Day. That would give them the full month of June, that they could work Sundays if they needed to, or whatever.
We don't work Sundays. Mike, do we work Sundays?
They can.
They can.
They can, yeah. They never worked Sundays across the street from me, but that's neither here nor there.
Well, that's one place.
As a contractor.
So, I think that it is decision time. So, do we want to do what Ray has proposed?
Kim, I agree.
I have to clarify that a little bit. You're saying move forward with this entirety, as it's said right here, no?
No.
Okay, that's fine then.
We need to, we need to have, I, I believe personally, we need to give the contractors a chance to speak out, and let them know the severity of the situation. We don't want to take drastic steps, but we will if we have to.
I agree with you perfectly.
So, let's hear what they have to say.
Okay.
I think the public, homeowners...
But these aren't drastic, these aren't drastic steps, in your mind.
But, but as you said, Josie, before, you look at this as a first step.
Yeah.
More could come if they're still giving us problems.
I'm saying, let's take the first step, because it's not that big a step.
I think homeowners need to be invited to this too. Homeowners are as important as the contractors, so.
More.
More, but let's, let's hear from them. Let's hear from them. I want to hear from them.
I withdraw this. Do you want to have a special meeting just for this topic, or do you want to bring it forward, say, at the next council meeting, as a discussion item on the regular council? We can advise the public, and we can advise the contractors. I know there are some contractors that are here now. I know there's public that has a lot of interest in it now. You can, we don't have a lot of time, but you can open up now, ask their opinions now, or have a special meeting if you think it's going to get lengthy. I mean, you obviously have many options.
I don't know that in the interest of, do you want to open up now? I think in the interest of time, we're going to run out of time for the other items on the agenda. I think we're going to run out of the other items. I think the, the way that the landscapers, when we're met at the recreation building a couple of years back, I think an open dialogue with the contractors would be beneficial. Do we want to make it just part of a council meeting?
Karen, when, when we did that from utilities, because it was you, Judy, and I, and Jill, and I forget who else was here, they already had something to look at, right?
Yeah.
We had already sort of established a guideline of what we were thinking about.
Well, they are going to have something to look at. It's already existed, ordinances that they are failing to comply with. So, they do have something to look at. But here's an example of something I'm thinking, and I'm just going to throw it out there. So, we, we say to the contractors, you know, "This is what we're proposing," and to us we say, "This seems easy." Now, you've got people who are trying to get crews together to get work done. So, now maybe there's a guy that's going to give them more work, because they can work on Sundays in another town through June, July, and August. So, now some guy's crew starts to, but you can't be here. So, his crew starts to dwindle.
Not in Avalon.
Because, so the crew starts to dwindle because they got another opportunity somewhere else. So, now when this person wants to get his crew together to, let's say, put up drywall or whatever, the guy's spoken for with another contractor, because he's getting more work there. So, I think, but, just please, just let me finish. I think there could be some sort of repercussions or ripple effects to look at before we go whole hog, if that's the way to say it, on this. That's all that I'm saying.
That's not our problem.
I agree.
I believe it's our problem when our people want to have a home built, and then our contractors are having problems getting subs. I just think it, I don't understand why we can't take a little bit of time, and we may end up right here.
Do whatever you want.
I agree.
I just think, I, I just don't understand why we, as the governing body who makes the rules, is worried about whether or not a contractor can get workmen. I don't understand that.
Because our taxpayers want their houses built.
Well, get their house built.
That's not our...
This isn't that drastic.
All right.
But that's fine. I'm okay. I'm okay with it.
So, your options are, do you want to have a special meeting, or do you want to bring it up at a regular, next regular council meeting?
I have a suggestion, just a suggestion, that maybe this won't work, but perhaps it will. Because we represent the residents here solely, that's who we represent, perhaps we should call upon Shapoa to do a survey, asking them what their residents, whether they're full-time residents or people who come here only in the summer, how they feel about this. Would they want us to make tighter laws, or do they like things the way they are?
They could. There's nothing that could be happening congruently.
Ask them on Saturday.
We can talk, yeah. But I think we're losing focus of what, nobody's saying this isn't going to happen.
Right, right.
Nobody's saying that.
Exactly, right.
So, that being said, I think what we do, we can put it back to A&amp;F to say, you know, "Do you, what do you want to do? Do you want to meet as a committee? We can be in the audiences like we did, or open? We'll put it on for discussion next council meeting."
I think that's the best way.
Put on for discussion next council meeting, night of the work session, discussion.
And, and we have to get it publicized enough that contractors know.
So, you want to wait and do it the first meeting in October?
Judy, our season is almost over. Are there going to be that many residents here to attend that meeting? I don't think so. That's my opinion. Maybe if you call a special meeting, or Shapoa...
They can email.
Something.
What's the difference?
They can email. There's still ways of corresponding with us. They can email, and we'll be open to listen.
I think the overwhelming response from the residents would be, "Yeah, let's tighten them up and cut back on this, on this building." I think that's what you're going to hear. So, I don't know that it's that, I know what Charles is saying, you want to open it up to them too, and that's true, but, you know, do you want the guy next door building on Sunday? Well, no, I don't. You know, you want to build it on Saturday? No, I don't. You know, I don't want them to start before ten in the morning. I don't want them to build when I'm here.
By the same token, you might have somebody who's purchasing a home, or...
You may have a few.
Saying, "I, wait a minute. You're telling me my home, which is very detailed."
Yes.
Very high-end.
Yes.
And does, no longer takes six months to build like they used to twenty years ago, but he wants his home to be done in an orderly, succinct fashion where details are met, and it's not the, the ant farm of a construction site from September to, to, to May, and the work, people are working on top of each other, work's not done efficiently, it's not done to the caliber that it should be and that they're paying for. You might have some, I'm not saying you will, I'm just saying, afford that person, if there is even one out there, the opportunity to come in and speak their mind. As other homeowners who don't want these regulations, or do want these regulations in place, have the opportunity to as well. I just want to hear from them.
No, that, you, you, I agree with you, but, but on the other hand, I think the builders who build here are professional enough that there's, as I said two times before, there's nothing here that's going to derail any projects.
Right.
They can plan around this.
It won't derail, and, but the only thing I mentioned, there's a flip side to this. So, now, what would have started between July and September, now all starts in September. And then there is, there is a confluence of new starts that happen in September where they would have been spread out. So, there is a flip side to that. And like I said before, those projects then extend into the summer. I'm not saying any of this is wrong. It all seems, on its surface, patently reasonable, and...
Let's just make sure.
Exactly.
You just need to hear, you need to hear from the other side.
I'm not sure, I'm not sure why...
Let's go with the first meeting in October to give plenty of time for people, if they want to correspond via email with the borough, if they want to come themselves and maybe even take the, the time off. We can certainly talk to people on Saturday at the Shapoa meeting as well. Next is...
That's the end?
Mm-hmm.
That's what we're doing? We all agree? I don't.
I don't, there's not a consensus, but there's a majority.
There is? Okay.
Do you want to do a vote?
Sure.
Go on. Okay, then that, we can do that, we can, all right, we'll get a motion that we put on for discussion the first weekend, or the first meeting in October. Continued discussion on proposed changes to...
October third.
The construction, not code, construction ordinances on October third, and, and the interim will be reaching out to both contractors and the public to hear from them.
I'll make that motion, Madam Mayor.
Second.[1623.91]
Clerk, call the roll.
Mrs. Kramer?
Yes.
Mrs. Lane?
No.
Mrs. Rich?
No.
Mrs. Gallagher?
No.
Mr. Craftcheck?
Yes.
Mr. Parzek?
Yes.
Mayor?
Yes. Next, Karen, Contract to Mott Associates. Or is it Jill?
Jill. You have a copy of the proposal from Mott and Associates for the master plan reexamen. This was submitted to the planning board for review. They did recommend bringing it back for council to authorize. The cost is $50,000. Jim would do the emergency appropriation. We put that on the last meeting, right? For $100,000, which, $50,000 would be for Mott. And the additional 50 is for any other professional that may come up during the process. Advertising, if we need any attorney reviews, et cetera. So we just wanted to bring it back for discussion with council. If you guys are comfortable, we can bring this forward for official authorization at our next meeting.
Jill, was the planning board in its entirety in favor of this?
I believe so, yes.
All right, thank you. Anybody have any?
We'll bring it forward.
So bring it forward, next meeting? Okay.
How many meetings will be facilitated between now and the end of the project?
There's a proposed timeline, you'll see. That right now there's 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, 8, 9, 10, 11 at this point. And that is not including any of the focus groups that'll be taking place and the subcommittees. So minimum of those meetings of the subcommittee, which then will be reaching out.
Will the $50,000...
There's no limit, there's no limit as to the number of meetings?
For the $50,000, is that what you're saying? So any subcommittee or focus group that meets will be covered by the $50,000?
Correct.
Okay. The additional $50,000. The additional $50,000 or the initial $50,000?
Initial $50,000.
For all committee meetings?
For, yeah, anything to deal with the master plan during this period of time.
It's my understanding that the $50,000 carried us through that timeline. Anything that extended beyond that timeline, the extra $50,000 was allotted for as anticipatory? Is that correct, Jill?
Correct. Once we get through this initial time period, we would have to renegotiate that figure.
Anything else on that? Jim Gallagher's waving his hand in the back.
Four.
Jim Gallagher, 280-101 First Street. I have a question concerning the vote that was just taken. Charles Craftcheck is a contractor. Should he not have recused himself from that vote?
It's volitional as to whether he should have recused himself. Technically, okay, that's, this is the actual enactment of the items. So I guess at this point, volitional. It's a valid question.
Just doesn't seem appropriate. He certainly has a vested interest in the outcome.
I hear your comment. And I agree that there is an argument to be made that a recusal would be appropriate.
So we would have a three to three?
No, we would have a...
Yeah.
Three to two.
No, three to two.
Three to two.
Three to two. But let me interject for a moment. If, does that mean that Charles, on anything that comes up with any contracting question whatsoever, would have to recuse himself?
Again, it's a volitional thing and individuals that aren't in a direct conflict can make a choice as to how they want to proceed. And then there's a procedure, should people believe there's a problem. I think if there's a direct relationship, it's called into question and the appropriate action is to recuse.
Charles, do you think it's in direct conflict?
I feel there's no direct relationship here. I've thought about this carefully. By analogy, by way of analogy, I'll refer to the zoning board where you have several contractors that sit on that and make decisions regarding zoning. I'm making decisions on the planning board involving plants, small community. It's, if you want to make a connection, a loose connection, I'm certain, I'm sure you can, sure I'm in the business. But I have no, this is broadly applied, anything we do here, to all contractors. This doesn't apply directly to me solely. So I'm very comfortable casting my vote in this situation.
But it would have an effect on you because you would have to go by the rules that we've set up.
What I'm saying is it has an effect on all contractors, not just me.
So he doesn't have to recuse himself, Mark?
Again, I think it's a matter of personal choice in this instance because it's...
So the vote stands as it was?
My personal opinion is to err on the side of caution. Okay, I answer recuse. But it's a, at this juncture, it's a choice because I think that Charles is right, there isn't a direct correlation.
So the vote stands as it was?
Does a direct correlation mean that it's not directly affecting a property that he's working on right now?
Or a proj, yeah, project, you know, I mean, a linear correlation between the two.
As what a direct correlation? But these rules would affect every contractor that has a contractor's license and is building in Stone Harbor. In a good way, I think, but it will make, it will... Every contractor will have to go by them. That's a, if it turns into an ordinance, so...
But he said he's not recusing, recusing, so the vote stands as is.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna defer to Mark on this.
I think at this juncture, with what we're talking about being a preliminary discussion, deferring to speak with contractors, I would let that vote stand.
Thank you. Okay, thank you, Mark. Thanks, Jim.
One more thing, though, back to the issues that, that Charles brought up about the zoning board that you said has a lot of construction people. Is that ethical?
At this point, our zoning board is, I think there's at least four contractors on it.
Is it ethical?
I think there's four.
Is it right?
It's problematic when individuals who are going to be affected by an outcome have a direct input into what the regulation is that could govern the outcome.
So it's not...
In other words...
The key word being, the key word being direct, correct?
In other words.
Direct. There's a big difference.
I'm not prepared to render an opinion here on all of the planning board members and...
No, zoning.
Or zoning. Zoning.
That's what...
It's on the zoning board where the majority, vast majority, are contractors.
Okay, it depends on what your interpretation is, is...
What do you mean?
He's the lawyer.
We shall discuss.
Yes.
Let's move on.
Isn't that the wolf guarding the hen house when the zoning board is made up of contractors?
But I think that they're ruling more on specific projects, not, not a general, like, how do you... They're ruling on specific projects.
In one, in one recent instance, a member who had a relationship with the applicant actually, actually recused himself, which where it directly involves a personal relationship or a personal benefit, yes, you remove yourself. That's Ethics 101. And I have no problem with that, and I will abide by that myself, if and when that comes to fruition. But what we're talking about here, maintaining open dialogue with the public and contractors, I will, I will not step away from that. That's what I campaigned on, is having conversations about this stuff and making everything open. I still don't know why all of our committee meetings aren't open, so that everyone can come.
Let, let me say this with regard to your comment and where that takes us. Everyone that's on the zoning board has to be a member of the town. Everyone that's on the zoning board has an interest in a property or a zone, or potentially a business. So I guess it's a fine line, depending on where you draw that. And I think your point is well taken. It's probably something that we should look into. But I'm not prepared to give you an opinion on the current composition of our board and whether it's a problem as we sit here today.
Did you, what you're looking like?
Oh, I was just gonna say that on the zoning board, they do recuse themselves, whether they know the applicant or even if they are building it, they do recuse themselves and they don't care the case or vote on it.
Okay. Now, I've lost track. We have, okay, engineers report.
I'm here.
You're here.
Good, good.
And here's your report, you got it?
You got it. Good afternoon, everyone. I'll just hit on some of the highlights from my report. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them. Under grant applications, we do have our 2018 DOT grants coming up. They're due October 6th. So I'll work with Jill and the rest of the staff here to select those projects that we want to submit for our 2018 DOT annual grants. Those are the municipal aid program, which covers roadway improvements, the bikeway program. And there's a couple of other programs that may, may not apply to the borough. We did submit our 2018 DCA Small Cities Program application. That was for ADA improvements, beach access, some sidewalk ramps. ADA improvements to the 96th Street bathrooms. I'm told that we came really close last year, so I'm, I'm confident, you know, that we'll, we'll secure that money this, this go-around. Jumping down the capitol list here, we have a couple of projects that are in the closeout phase. Golden Gate Road, I have been in contact with that contractor. They are scheduled to come back in the next couple of weeks. I have requested a more definitive schedule from them for when they're gonna come back and finish their work. And that would apply to a couple of these other projects where there's some punch list work that needs to be done that had been held over for the summer season. Flipping to page two. The second project down, our flood hazard risk reduction project. That is the first phase of our overall drainage improvement program that we're working on. When we received the grant from DEP, that project is in design. We do have two grants on the books for 95th Street, one from 16 and one from 17 from DOT. We have updated our estimate. I will go over that with Jill so that we can decide how we want to move forward on that project. This was a project where we applied for two different sections in two different grant years. So we can combine those into one project and go out to bid. The police station expansion is out to bid. That bid opening is on October 11th. Sanitary sewer pump station replacement is in progress. And we did meet with Miranda to go over the bikeway initiative. That work is in, in progress as well. That's all I have on my report. If you guys have any questions or comments, I'd be happy to answer.
I have one just on Golden Gate.
Yep.
That's just not a punch list, that's...
Correct.
Mill and pave.
That's right. So the final paving, yep, we still have to do some final paving. There's a little bit of, some sewer laterals that need to be addressed. So they'll do that, they'll do the sewer work, and then they'll do the, the finished pave.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
You, your, your second bullet here in the flood hazard risk reduction.
Yes.
You met with the county engineer's office. What, you share with us what the results were?
What that was for is they have infrastructure that is within, within this project area. So the, the meeting with them was to go over both the, and I think Ray touched on this in his presentation at the last meeting, was to go over funding, that they were going to contribute for their portion of the project that was within our overall project. And also to coordinate our design with any work that the county was designing so that when you do this type of project, as, as Ray showed, we have kind of the master plan. And we want to make sure that whatever the county is doing is coordinated with the overall design for the entire drainage area. So it was both a design coordination meeting, and it was also a meeting to discuss their contribution to the projects that they're kicking in for, because we're taking in drainage off of, off of a county road through our system. And the outcome was that they were going to contribute and that they are going to coordinate their design with us. And all of that will crystallize as we get further along in the design process.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. Anything else?
Anybody else, questions for engineer?
Thank you.
Jill, do you want to take it from here? Your best practices?
I'll skip the best practice just for a second to give the other employees a chance to give their reports since after 4 o'clock. Tax collector?
Good afternoon, everyone.
Good afternoon.
Happy September. There's really nothing new going on in my office right now. We're catching our breath at the end of the very busy summer. And that's all I have, unless anyone has questions for me.
Thanks, Deb.
Thank you.
Thanks, Deb.
Tax assessor?
Good afternoon. I just got a report from Vital Communications regarding the revow today. Their progress so far, to date, they have completed initial fieldwork for all properties in the borough of Stone Harbor. They're sweeping through now, knocking on doors during the week. There was a little bit of a hiccup last week, but they're only making appointments on Saturday now. Digital photographs have been taken for all properties and they're taking appointments for interior inspections. Their land values are currently being established for Class 2, which is residential, and Class 4, commercial properties. And they're pricing out the, like, price per square foot of commercial properties along 96th Street and business districts in town. And I was just away for the, for a week at a conference, so I'm very far behind. I'm buried. And just trying to keep up with new construction, deeds, address changes. Same old, same old. It's almost over. Any questions?
What's the date Vital has to be done by?
I think it's in the middle of November, isn't it, Jill, somewhere in there? But it, like, if they're not quite, you know, if we still have some, you know, last-minute adjustments to make, the county will give us a extension. But I don't think we're really gonna need it, so... I'm reviewing those land values now. That, that's like the biggest part of my responsibility is to review those land values.
Okay. Any else, questions for Margaret?
Margaret, what do you do with a property that's under construction, say they're not, haven't completed it yet and they come out for a revow?
Well, if it's not completed, like, let's say, let's say if the house across the street that was, that they were building for 18 months or whatever, yeah, finally finished, right, beautiful. They wouldn't get their assessment until 2018. Like, if it's not done by October 1st, they won't have an added assessment for 2018.
Okay.
Okay?
It would stay the same, they'd pay...
It would stay the same, and then they'd get, like, let's say if it was done in January, they'd get 12 months of 2018 next October 1st, when I, when I would send them their notice. Thank you. Anything else? Thank you.
Mike?
He's had it with us.
You gotta talk again?
Other than that, I really don't have any new news as far as what's going on in town. It's, it's still very busy. We still have a lot of construction going on. Still more permits coming in. It's a, it's a strange dynamic right now with what's going on in town. It usually, in the summer months, it usually stopped for a while, but it didn't stop this year. They kept coming in, so... Apparently the market's doing really good and everybody's, they're, they want to knock them down and build them back up again, so... That's, that's what I see.
About how many houses do you think are being built right now?
Well, they're, they're closing at the same time, so there's probably, I would say, under construction. There's gotta be 30 houses right now, but all the newer permits that we just got are gonna, it's gonna amp it up a lot, so... Probably have about 10, maybe 12 permits that aren't quite issued yet.
How about demolitions?
I just got two today, as a matter of fact, and...
Two more today?
Two more today, yeah, aside from what I already knew. So we probably have, I'm gonna say, three to five, maybe, that are in the process of, timeline-wise, that are gonna get done soon, within the next week or two. That are gonna get knocked down. But we're, we're rolling pretty good here. Lot going on. I really don't have anything else unless everybody has any questions for me, other than... All right.
Thank you.
Thanks, Mike. Okay, turn it back over to Jim for the best practices.
Best practices. We scored a 96% this year. There was, we only had one no. And there were 25 questions in total. Last year, there were 30 questions, and we had four no's, and we scored an 87%. And the one no that we did get has, is made up of about 10 issues. And only one of the issues is the one that we did not, that knocked us out of it, so...
What is it that we're lacking on that?
It's, in the, on the website, the state is looking for us to put, have a page where we post, where we're looking for bids or proposals.
And we're, we're actually working on that stuff.
So where it would be a... You're submitting everything online, is that what it?
No.
No.
It would be, you would have, typically, a town will have it under purchasing and you go in and it'll show any quotes you're looking for, bids, like the police building would be posted, we would post out on there. Someone would go on, they could obtain the bid specs information about when it, when the bids are due on that site.
Okay. The county has something where you sign up in advance for particular things, and you register, and then you have an email address, and when something to your company is being bid, you automatically are notified via email, like you register on a, on a portal.
Help their bids and when they're due and then...
So you actually register on the portal and you're automatically electronically notified. You, your list, let's say, I don't want to, I, let's say there's 25 different areas. You pick which areas you want to be notified by registering and it automatically goes out to you.
Yeah. I mean, we can look at that. We just don't go out to bid for that much, so it really depends on how complicated the site is and how costly it is. I think we might do actual bids maybe three times a year if that.
Okay.
Really?
And the state's just looking for a spot where we notify people that we are going out to...
That we're going out to bid.
Yes.
And you get information on it.
Yeah.
Okay. Anything for Jim on the best practices? We skipped planning board report.
Right.
When did we, we met last, on August 14th. We meet next on September 18th. And at the last meeting, the discussion was the proposal from Mott and the timeline for the meetings. And that's basically, we just continued to discuss. We didn't have anything before us, and it's just discussion.
The next subcommittee meeting is, for master plan review, is September 13th.
Is it? Okay. Yes, it's on the Wednesday, and then we meet on the 18th. Any questions for planning board? Anything going on there? No? Public Works?
I got enough.
I got enough. You got 13 minutes is what you got.
Not that much.
Everybody read their reports?
Yes.
Just some highlights for Public Works. Summer trash and recycling. Summer trash and recycling will be ending this Saturday. We'll go back to the winter schedule, which is a once-a-week pickup, Monday, Tuesday, and Wednesday. That'll begin on Monday, the eleventh. Just in July, our single-stream recycling was up by point three six percent from 2016. But our solid waste collection and tonnage went down seven point six-two percent from 2016, as well as our single-stream recycling went down six point eight-five percent from 2016. So we're collecting less trash, but our recycling went up a little bit, which is not bad.
Collecting less, but recycling better?
A little bit better. Point three six percent. Bulk trash will be Monday, September eighteenth. All materials cannot be out on the curb until seventy-two hours prior to, which is an ordinance that needs to be addressed and enforced. Because a lot of times, we'll have properties put, start putting out materials right now instead of waiting until the seventy-two hour period before Monday, the eighteenth. July, two thousand seventeen, our water usage went up two point three six seven, seven million gallons from two thousand sixteen. So we're collecting less trash, and we're using a lot more water. I think a lot of that has to do with, there's more pools in town, there's more irrigation systems running because of the smart systems are allowed to run every day, except for Sundays, which, it's tough to, to monitor that unless you walk through their yard, and it, it's like a marsh because there's too much water on it. A lot of that, we've been getting complaints from residents about water in the, in the curb lines, which is causing bacteria to, to grow. And with some of the heavy rains we've had recently, that is causing it, as well as the runoff from too much irrigation water. So we've had quite a few calls over the last month. So I, I don't know what, what the option would be, what, what the, the, what we should do to try to curb the amount of waters being used on irrigation because they're overwatering. Something we should talk about in utilities and in Public Works in our meetings. Currently, we're working on our operating budget and capital for 2018. We do have a snowplow rodeo coming up on the twenty-fourth, where we'll send a couple of our trucks down to the county airport. And we'll get together with other municipalities and see who can plow snow the best. There's a, I think it's eight, eight different stations of challenges for the plow drivers to go through. Usually, we do, we do pick up an award here and there. Last year, we didn't. But we're trying to get back on track on that. Are we doing anything for nine eleven? I haven't heard anything.
No, this year, there's not gonna be any actual commemoration at Freedom Park. No.
Nothing.
No.
No, Judy and I discussed that back in January, and last year was the fifteenth year. So it was suggested that everybody go over to the county or do a reflection at our memorial. And I don't know if the firemen are doing anything or not.
I don't, I don't believe so.
I don't think so, but...
Just give you a heads up, if that is the case, this storm is coming up. Irma, Irma? May come this way, and if it does get, if it does come this way, it's gonna be Monday on nine eleven. On Thursday, we, we had the parking kiosk company come in, and we, we did a walk-through Ninety-Sixth Street, two-hundred block, and we're planning on moving forward with taking the meters out and putting kiosses in for the two-hundred block of Ninety-Sixth Street, which will eliminate fifty parking meters and change them over to the kiosks, just like we have on the, on the three-hundred block and in the parking lots.
Where will the kiosks be?
They'll be stationed three on either side, every eleven spots. So it'll be between the post office and the node, and then between the, the node and second node, moving towards Third Avenue, and then between the, the second node and Third Avenue itself on both sides of the street.
And then you'll number the street?
We will number the, we'll do the same thing we did on the three-hundred block. We'll, we'll take the meter heads off, and then we'll put the numbers of the parking spaces...
So the, the poles will stay there?
On the poles.
Just curious.
I haven't heard anything from the gas company. They're planning on coming in this, next week or so? Is there, have they given us a preliminary plan?
Yeah, I haven't gotten any notice of when they're gonna start. I'll have to reach out to them, other than they were coming back in the fall, so...
We need to reach out to them. Find out what's going on, whether they're gonna start repaving first, or they're gonna start the North End project beforehand. Other than that, have a good evening. Unless anybody has any questions.
I just have one thing to add to that, Judy. Just in case anybody's interested, our dumping fees to the county on their anticipated fees were thirty-one thousand, one hundred and sixty-four dollars and forty cents for the month of July. It's a lot of money. And that's what the county charges us to dump the trash.
One other thing, Grant, back to irrigation. I know you had mentioned complaints about spray at the sidewalk. And to say the least, I think a lot of the irrigation systems, even the smart systems, are less than perfect. And with time, it seems as though the heads tend to migrate on their own, of their own accord. And you might set them for, you know, a ninety-degree spray, but six months later, three months later, doesn't matter, they're going in the street. It's less than a perfect system, to say the least. I did some research, and there is subsurface drip irrigation systems that can be installed. I think it's a little bit more involved, but it certainly bears mentioning here. And it may be something we want to consider as an alternative, and maybe even enforcing that as part of a mandate for the irrigating the space between the sidewalk and the curb line, because that seems to be where most of the problems are, are caused. That being said, it might be a good idea to do it wherever there's, there's grass. Because I've noticed properties where they're getting, they're getting their lawn cut, one of the heads gets clipped, and next thing you know, you got a geyser the next time the system comes on. There's a lot of water loss there. So I think, I think this bears mentioning here and looking into as a viable option for irrigating sod going forward in our town. I think subsurface drip irrigation, out of the way, not gonna get damaged by a lawnmower, by a weed whacker. And I think that's where lies most of the problems. Again, also, the, the heads themselves just tend to migrate on their own. So I figured I'd bring this up, and I'm gonna look into it more, and we'll discuss it at the next utilities meeting.
Thanks, Grant.
Okay, thank you.
Anything else under utilities? Charles?
Nope.
Jill?
Can I go, can I circle back to Borough Clerk?
You weren't on the, oh, you were first on the list.
First on the list.
In the beginning cash for the borough for this month was three million, six hundred forty-three thousand, six hundred thirty dollars and thirty-nine cents. The disbursements this month were one million, three hundred seventy-six thousand, two hundred ninety-nine dollars and sixty-four cents. In the utilities department, the cash balance is one million, four hundred forty-four thousand, nine hundred twenty-one dollars and forty-five cents. And the disbursements were five hundred sixty-three thousand, eight hundred seventy-five dollars and forty-one cents. In the Borough Clerk's office for the month of August, total taken in two thousand, two hundred seventy-seven dollars and fifty cents. And in the construction office, total taken in fifty thousand, five hundred sixty-four dollars. Thank you.
Thank you. Is that everybody?
I think so.
So does anybody else have anything to bring up before we adjourn? Jill, no. Jim, no. So motion to adjourn?